Today is Tuesday, October the third, two thousand twenty-three, at six o'clock. I appreciate everybody coming tonight. I would like to bow your head with me for a word of prayer. Our gracious heavenly Father and Son, thank you for this wonderful day that you give us. Thank you for all your meaningful lessons, Lord. Kindred, as in all that we say and do tonight, the Lord, that everything we do, honor and glorify you, and be for the betterment of the city of Darlington. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Amen.
Everybody stand up for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, very good. All right, do we have approval of minutes from the regular meeting of September the fifth, two thousand twenty-three?
I make a motion that we approve the minutes from our regular meeting of September fifth, two thousand twenty-third.
I'll second.
Mr. Gardner?
Aye.
Mr. Sager? Very good, Mr. Sager, thank you. All right, do we have approval of minutes for the meeting agenda for the regular meeting on October the third?
I make a motion that we approve the meeting agenda for the regular meeting for today, day of October third, two thousand twenty-three.
I'll second it.
Mr. Gardner?
Aye.
Ms. Reed? Mr. Sager? Very good, Mr. Sager, thank you. All right, citizen's wishes to speak, do we have anybody signed up tonight? All right, new business, Darlington Renaissance Master Plan, Bill.
Hope we didn't have any citizens to sign up. Wow.
Hey there, Mr. Bill.
Good evening, how are y'all doing?
Good.
Thank y'all for having me here tonight. I'm Bill Eubanks. I'm Director of Planning and Lancy of Architecture for SGA Lovey in Charleston. And I'm also joined tonight by one of my project managers, Joseph O'Callahan. So, we are incredibly excited about the opportunity to work with y'all on your Darlington Design Master Plan. I think that, I think Darlington is poised at a tipping point, if you will. And I think that this plan, if everything goes the way plans are supposed to go, will be a wonderful thing for your city that will guide it for years to come. And one reason I say if things go the way we hope they go, we really relish public involvement in our process. The people that will come to those meetings will know more about Darlington than I could ever learn because they've lived here forty, fifty, sixty years. And they know this place, so having those people involved is going to be incredibly important to us. I know that y'all are going to be appointing your fellow citizens tonight to the Darlington Renaissance Advisory Workroom. And I want you to know, when we came up with that name, that was a very intentional thing that we did. Partly because the acronym for that is D-R-O-N. And for us, that speaks to the level of involvement that this group will have with us. We expect them, we expect to learn from them, for one thing. We expect them to be active participants in the process. But we want their ideas, we want their creativity, we want their enthusiasm, but we also want them to be ambassadors and advocates for the program and for the master plan when it's done. Because any master plan that just sits on a shelf is only worship paper it was printed on. We want this to be a master plan that gets implemented, that makes things happen. I know that Darlington also hasn't had a Main Street program in years, decades, and I think that that's something that personally, I would love to see that happen because then that becomes kind of a mechanism for a lot of the things that need to happen in Darlington to happen. And, you know, it's staff, there's somebody that's watching out over it, so that, expect to see that in our recommendations. So, that's all I'm going to say, but I am here to answer any questions that y'all might have. And we're ready to get started.
I'll have a question. I appreciate all y'all's energy, y'all about the form of this and everything, and look forward to meeting with you shortly.
It's going to be fun.
I'm excited.
Just for public information, how long does this process, you anticipate it will take with the appointees input, community input, and just give us sort of a general timeline?
We're thinking in the neighborhood of about six months. And, and quite frankly, that has less to do with how long it takes us to do the work as it does to kind of bringing the town along and getting buy-in to, you know, to the product. And making, and making sure that everybody's part of that process and that everybody's heard.
And so, these will be meetings that will be advertised and citizens will be invited, in essence, in vast.
Absolutely. They will be encouraged to come.
And share their thoughts and their dreams.
Yes, they do.
Hey there, what's that? You'll start more so with the group that we've appointed?
Yes.
And then, at that point?
And then broaden it out to the, to the public.
Right, so everybody, everybody, all the citizens, if they want to input, will have an input.
Everybody will have input.
And then you'll just gather those, all the dollars from everybody that's brought to the table, and you'll sift through that and?
Bundled it down and come up with something. It was, it was funny, I got to share this, I was, Joseph and I were driving up this afternoon, and we were just talking, and I was like, I was like, Joseph, I have no idea what we're going to do in Darlington. And Joseph said, well, isn't that what the process is for? I said, yeah, one hundred percent right. So, we trust the process.
And do we ever decide how far it goes out, far as the parameters?
We are looking at the corporate limits, so we're looking at the entire town, but, but I can, I can tell you, just from my point of view, I think we have to broaden that out a little bit more and look at annexation opportunities. Because, you know, if the town's going to grow, we want to, we want that to be in a kind of a controlled, measured, intentional way.
Because my, my question, my, my understanding, I'll start with it, we're like, in a boundary of, that we actually cover the whole town, and we'll cover the whole town?
We're going to cover the whole town.
There's also a handout that John gave each of you that I'm popping, that has a green timeline on it. And there's also another handout with the temporary schedule behind that, that has a series of dates on it. And that's something you can look at, too. So, the first event will be on the fifteenth of November with each one of you in individual meeting with Bill on November fifteenth, and that will kick off the local, the local stuff.
So, so the public, so we, we and the public can understand until a certain point, what are you looking for them to bring to the table? I mean, somebody runs up, says, oh, I want this restaurant, or I want that building, or I want a skate rink, or bowling alley, or, I mean, what ideas are you looking for? Are we looking for this street to be, to look better, or looking, what should they bring to the table?
So, I'll just, I'm going to give you something that I believe about urban design, which is what we're doing. I think urban design can be boiled down to two very essential tasks. One is to identify everything in your community that is worth preserving and protecting, and find ways to preserve them and protect them. The second thing is to put the policies and mechanisms in place to replace everything that's not worth saving with things that will be. So, that's a lot of what we're doing. And, I mean, and I want, you know, people come to me and they say, we need, we need restaurants on this corner, we need places for teenagers to go, we need places for senior citizens to go, we need more places to shop, I mean, whatever, whatever ideas they have, we want them. But more than anything else, these are, the people that come to these meetings are going to come to these meetings because they love Darlington. So, we want to know what they know, and we want to know why they love Darlington, so that we can reinforce that.
I have a, just a concern, I just want to know if this would be in there because right now, I'm working on getting a port of housing in the area that I, that I represent in, what to. But a concern that, the concern that I have, and that I want to be part of this, is that the housing that comes in the area, that it is all part of a plan, so that you, I mean, and I don't know how that can happen, if that would be, that it would be the design kind of thing, the, whatever they're doing in the area, that it could be all part of this great plan here, that it looks?
Yes, ma'am. So, so one of the things that we'll be doing, in fact, I've already started doing it, is looking at your zoning ordinance, and finding things that, because honestly, when, if anybody comes to your town doing anything, they've got to work within your zoning ordinance. And if the ordinance isn't written to allow good stuff to happen, it's only going to allow bad stuff to happen. So, we're going to be looking at your zoning ordinance and looking at ways that it could be changed and improved. And one of those that I've already noticed is, like, the maximum density that you allow for housing is really low. And if you want to have affordable housing, you're probably going to have to up that density a little bit.
Gotcha, see? Sounds pretty good already.
If we up, if we up that density, then the infrastructure has to be up also.
It's got to be in place.
For the public to understand that we want more people, we want more businesses, the infrastructure all has to be able to fit that.
Absolutely.
For businesses and people to come into town, the infrastructure has to be there in place.
Yes.
And so, all that.
And that's not just water and sewer, that's fire, that's police, that's schools, that's everything.
Streets, everything. Mr. Mayor, also want to mention and remind the public that we purposely included the school district in this, St. John's Elementary and Brunson-Darling. So, the public can hear you, you're talking about St. John's Elementary and Brunson-Darling, but the school district has been included? Those are key components for our city. They're our own central part of our town, and hoping that we can put all that together. And, and, at the end, we would have, kind of have a timeline, what's, what's best to start with this, to get to this point, and?
Yeah, so, so typically, whenever we do a plan like this, we look at what kind of the, what we would consider low hanging fruit. You know, these are the things that you can do now, they can be implemented easily, the cost may not be, you know, considerable, these are things that are going to be down the road. So, yeah, we, we look at that from a phasing standpoint, but also we look at that low hanging fruit.
All right.
Any other questions for me?
Mr. Mayor, what's one of the things to do now, we need to add a vote. One, if, hopefully, most of you have your appointments, then you need, then you need to vote to accept the proposal. Do you need the appointments tonight? We've already, I've already given you appointments, I mean, are we supposed to announce the appointments to people that we want to appoint tonight?
If you wish to, we're still troubleshooting the system, so people can hear you, and they can hear Mr. Eubanks, but they can't hear anyone else. So, would the rest of you make sure that your microphones are on, we're trying to improve the audio quality on the video? Thank you.
Mr. Sager, do you need our names tonight? Like I said, I've already given you names, do you need people to announce their names that you want to put on the committee tonight, or?
Well, that would depend on what, what the council wants to do. I'm, I'm happy to receive the names now and work on the schedule. I'm happy for you to email me who you would like. That's fine, too, it's not necessary, you know, that it be done in the meeting.
Oh, good.
So, we'll just email the names to you?
Perfect. So, then we just need to make the motion? Just need to make a motion to accept the proposal?
Do you want to make a motion?
All right, I would make a motion to, if we approve the contract with SGA slash NW for the Darlington Renaissance Master Plan, for the subtotal of all phases of two hundred and fifteen thousand, nine hundred and ten dollars, with historic preservation planning and traffic and transportation planning if necessary, if that turns out to be outside of the scope, with a maximum of eight thousand and fifteen thousand for those two portions, with the work to perform in accordance with the guidelines set out within the plan and on the draft of the timelines that have been handed out tonight.
I'll second that motion.
Mr. Meadows?
Yes.
Ms. Reed? Mr. Sager? Very good, Mr. Sager.
Thank y'all.
Thank you.
We're going to head back to Charleston. Thank you, we'll see you soon.
So, the public's real clear, I mean, the purpose of the master plan that we've been wanting for a while is that we all have ideas, but we put a professional there, plan all these ideas out, get the ideas and plans all together, so that we can, in the future, act on those, and, like you said, not lay it on the shelf, make sure it's, it's being done. All right, thank y'all. All right, first reading ordinance, two thousand twenty-three dash oh-nine, Business License Standardization Act?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. As you know, every, December thirty-first of every odd year, every municipality levying a business license must adopt a U.S. class schedule as, as established by the Municipal Association. That's what this begins to do, this will be the first of two readings. The amendments are to class eight point three telecommunications, eight point six pool tables, and eliminates classes nine point four one and nine point four two, which is peddler's license.
Ted, you're in.
I'm asking for?
To renew a peddler's license, sir?
They, they will be combined in another section. They're still going to be there, they're just going to be combined. So, I'm asking to approve first reading, because we got to have this done by December third.
May I make a motion that we approve first reading of ordinance, twenty twenty-three dash zero nine, the amendment of the business license ordinance of the city of Darlington to update the class schedule as required by Act one seven-six of twenty twenty specifically addressing those matters relating to class eight point three telecommunications, class eight point six pool table, and the elimination of classes nine point four one and nine point four two relating to peddlers.
Second.
Mr. Meadows? Mr. Carter? Mr. Sager? Very good. Thank you, Mr. Sager. All right, Water Department Purchase, Mr. Phillips?
Good evening, Mary, Council. I'm going to let Jonathan Vogel like present this to you, along with Mr. Daniel Wilson. Jonathan would like me to introduce himself to you all, so I planned to, Council's actually born here in Darlington, so he's a hometown guy. He has certified licenses for both water treatment and water distribution, he has certification in auto shoveling, trenching, and holds a class A CDL with all endorsements. He's worked for the city of Darlington since twenty twenty-one, when I hired him, he was my first hire, I think, and he's been in the water and sewer industry for about fifteen years now. And he's been working on these purchases. I started working with Daniel about a year and a half ago, I guess, is when we first started. Two years ago, really? When I first got here, maybe six months, I've worked with Daniel in other places, and, and they helped us out with a lot of different things over the years. He, high-rise tanks, which is what we're going to talk about tonight, and Mr. Wilson. Jonathan has several other purchase orders that he has been working on for, some of those for a year and a half, for the purchases of these trucks, which seems to be a meticulous thing to do with the state contract purchase, so he's going to present all this stuff to you all.
Like Charles said, the first thing I have is purchase of two two thousand twenty-four F-150 service trucks for the Water and Sewer Department. This purchase will be through the state contract for German services, and these purchases are budgeted. The total cost of both trucks is ninety-six thousand, nine hundred and ninety-three dollars. These two trucks were replaced, the two oldest trucks in our fleet, which are thirteen years old and seem to be breaking down every chance they give.
What do you do with the elders?
I don't know if we're going to pass them on to the Streets Department or go deal or get that aside yet.
I'm prepared to make a question.
Number one of these is a V-eight, one's a V-six.
We got one to tow the jetter with, the jetter's like seventy, eight hundred pounds once it's loaded, and one, one, two, one's more of, just a get-around-town truck.
General purpose?
Yes, sir, yes, sir.
I'm listening to approve, I'm a Carolina Ford, for ninety-six thousand, nine hundred and thirty-three dollars and twenty cents.
I'll second.
Mr. Dunn? Ms. Reed? Mr. Sager? Mr. Sager?
All right, second. I'd like Council's approval to enter the contract with Southern Corrosion, a company that specializes in water tank storage maintenance. As you all know, Darlington has two aerial tanks, one on North Main, one on Pine Street, and Southern Corrosion has a great contract, provides great service, and their contract is a twelve-year contract with a thirty-six thousand, five hundred and forty-five dollar a year premium.
Plus, an increase in this balance CPI.
That's correct. That's correct, yes, sir.
And what the current CPI is?
Yes, sir.
Three point seven percent.
Yeah.
Would be going up by that or some other function next year.
Okay. Thank you, great, that's my attention. I'll tell you what I'm going to do now, I'm going to hand this over to Daniel Wilson. He's going to have all the answers to any questions you got.
Because I, you'll need to explain whatever that was that you were, you were saying.
Consumer Price Index.
Okay, so?
So, it's, it's kind of tied in with inflation, but it's the average of the cost of various things, put in a number, the banks will sometimes, if you got an adjustable loan, it'll base it on something like Prime Plus, this is sort of the same thing, there's an adjustment based upon the cost that are occurred as determined by the government. So, it's, it could be thirty-six plus whatever the CPI may happen to actually be. Some things cause it to go up, some things cause it to go down, like gasoline right now is up, groceries are up, some other things are down, so it just averages it out.
So, but, but when I'm looking at the first year, it's a twelve-year, but each year it's going to cost us thirty-six, five, thirty-six thousand, five hundred and forty-five, but you were saying because of the CPI, that the next year may be something else, maybe higher, or the, you know, by the time you get to the twelve-year, we might be paying fifty thousand dollars a year?
Possibly.
Is that, is that what you're, I mean, is that in a nutshell?
Yes, ma'am, I would love to explain that.
But, yeah.
And by the way, Ms. Reed, exclamation, Mayor, Council, thank you for allowing me to be here tonight, thanks to these two guys back here, I've been in the water industry for twenty-seven years, I'm Daniel Wilson, I'm a professional engineer, and for the purpose of this, I'm a NACE certified, a National Certified Coating Inspector, so I'm as certified and qualified as you can get in this business of tanks. I spent a long time, I managed a utility for a decade of my career, so I've been definitely come from both sides, and have worked with the council for many years. I'd like to start with a question, because I will get back to yours, and when you think about your elevated water tanks, what is most important about those tanks to you guys, to the council?
That give the citizens clean water.
Okay, so clean water, water quality?
Yeah.
What else?
On demand.
The bell bells?
On demand, it's almost a battery, if you think of it, it holds potential energy of water, so resilience. What else?
Appearance.
Aesthetics, appearance, public relations, all of these things. I teach for South Carolina Water, all over the state, when I go and I teach, I go, there's only four or five things in your water utility that citizens base how they feel about the utility. One's your rates, everybody cares about the water bill, but more so what it looks like and how you present that. Work trucks, I always bring that up, brilliant. More importantly, where the work trucks are or shouldn't be, is a big thing. Five-hydrants on sidewalks and water tanks, it is your largest billboard in this community, with your name written on it. So, to, to say that it's just one or the other is definitely short. So, guys, what we've got before you tonight is a, is a proposal to maintain your water tanks over the life, their life. The twelve-year term has actually been stated, because that's when we plan to paint the inside and outside, but it's actually a one-year agreement with a guaranteed scope of work over as long as you want to stay in the contract. CPI, the opposite of doing it this way, over, there's two ways to do this, one is to wait twelve more years, go to bed, paint your tank. I just gave a price to paint a tank a third of the size of one of yours today, and it was two hundred and seventy thousand dollars for the inside and outside. So, if you multiply that time with the cost of how it grows, CPI is the absolute best opportunity for the city over the long run. Now, last year, I know CPI has been all over the place, but even over the last ten years, CPI only averages two point seven percent, and that's including nine percent last year. So, it is still a very, very small margin of growth over time. The way the contracts work that don't use CPI is they have to guesstimate that CPI, that growth. So, what they end up doing over the long term is putting five to seven percent in the contract. So, it's a shared risk, but it actually, we've never had a customer that doesn't save money by doing it this way, over the long term.
Let me ask you right long?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, because I'm, like, I'm kind of, I'm kind of understanding a little bit, but here's the thing, the service doesn't change, you always have, how the, their rates may change this, this, but it doesn't say nothing in here about you doing the same thing, but it's, this being, you, we are paying more. But I don't see anything in here that says that if, if the rate goes up, we're going to do this, we have more to do, because our tanks are not any bigger, the amount of water that's in there is the same thing, you're going to be able to paint the same amount, you understand what I, where I am, okay? So, you need to kind of?
I, I will, I will say?
I'm not trying to be, I just?
No, ma'am, and I respect that, so, the cost of painting this tank in twelve years is going to be significantly more than it is today.
Yeah.
But when we price this, we look out over the next two cycles, we actually take about a twenty-eight year cycle of maintenance, and back it into today's present cost, so you're buying today's value in that twelve-year period at today's dollars.
Okay.
Not, to interrupt Daniel, we paid three hundred and seventy thousand dollars to paint our tanks, and five or six years ago, twenty seventeen, pre-COVID, three hundred and seventy thousand dollars. And we're required to paint them every so often, along with washouts and other maintenance that will be provided with this, with the service.
In twenty seventeen, they paid three hundred and seventeen thousand dollars?
Three hundred and seven, seventy thousand, yeah.
City drawn it.
I think the work was actually completed right at first of twenty eighteen, but?
So, when were they, when were, they were painted in seventeen?
They only painted when he, in, in the twelve years that he says that he's been working.
The cost of the material, cost of paint is higher, right?
Yes, it went up thirty-three percent last year.
But not?
No, please. See, so, your current values of tanks, and when you put it in a different perspective, it sounds like a lot of money, but your current tanks, if you were to build them today, is about a six million dollar asset, between the two of them. So, when you're looking at it, you're talking about a cost to maintain those tanks over the horizon, as far as you want to go, most of our customers stay with us thirty and forty years.
But what you're saying is, in two thousand seventeen, we, the city of Darlington paid three hundred and seventy thousand dollars. In twelve years, if we pay thirty-seven thousand dollars, which I understand it will potentially go up, but thirty-seven thousand dollars in twelve years would be four hundred and forty-four thousand dollars, that you spread out over a period of time. So, when, when we look at this, and it says visual inspection, repairs under, uncovered through inspection, so if you?
So if you, as you're inspecting and then something comes up, there's not an additional, oh, well, this is all covered.
Everything's covered.
We're basically buying a warranty that our, our tanks will be good for this period of time. But at any time, if we say, well, we can't afford it, we don't want to do it, we can opt out of the contract.
Correct. So we wash tanks out typically on groundwater utilities. We wash tanks out every five years, and that's what we bound into the contract. Your tanks actually are due to be washed out right now. And that's the first piece. So annual inspections are required by DHEC. They have to be climbed and inspected every year. Washouts, EPA and DHEC say every three to five years. That's typically three years for surface water and five years for groundwater is how that works out for various reasons.
You have groundwater.
You have groundwater, yes. So that happens automatically in the contract as well. So not only the cost of painting, but all those other services. I can also tell you that you've got a broken dome hatch right now that literally when you open it, it comes off in your hands. That's in here to be repaired, installing ladder gates to keep people off your tanks, which is a liability against the city, is built into this. It's more than just painting tanks. It's true asset management over the long term.
Could you explain what is included in washout and why you do it?
Okay, well, Charles is over there poking me going his feet up. But aside, because I get real geeky real fast about this stuff. Basically, every tank works as a settling chamber, if you will. There's trepidity, micro, microfine particles in every source of water. We measure them with light, shining light, they're in a fraction of that light. Okay, that's way too much. But those get in that static environment of the tank and they touch the sidewalks and they sew. So basically, what you end up with is an accumulation of solids. Not just solids, but in a static environment, the same, if anyone's ever cut a piece of PVC water pipe and it's got that black film, a biofilm inside of it, naturally occurs, can't stop it. It will grow in a static environment when it has a particulate to attach to it. That's what we're washing out of those tanks is an accumulation of five years of biofilm. It's not going back into water utility. The shape of the bowl of the tank basically serves as a settling chamber. It's not going back down the riser. But if you don't wash it out routinely.
At some point, it will.
It will grow up and will go back into water utility. It also oxidizes chlorine, you call this TTHM to increase. And there's a lot of things, reasons you wash out tanks on occasion. But basically, you take the tank offline, you open it up at the bottom, you start at the top on the inside and you wash it down. And you wash it all the way down the riser until literally it's clean enough to eat off of, because we're talking about drinking water. Then we sterilize it and we seal it back up. Then it goes through a back teeth testing process to make sure that it's safe for that water to be used again back in the utility. Takes about a week, not to wash it out, takes a day to wash it out, takes about a week for the full process.
So it's kind of the same idea as you clean out your bathtub.
Pretty close.
You don't, you get soap scum build up around it.
That's a great example. I'm gonna use that.
This is a, this is a twelve-year preventive maintenance plan. If you're planning this speed for a period of time, we don't, it's kind of out of our hands and we don't have to worry about it that quick.
Correct.
Whereas in the past, we haven't had any preventive maintenance plans.
And we annually hire somebody to do our inspections, whoever that may be, we can get to do it.
It's in the past, it's fixing with Brooke.
That's right.
I have a question, not about the details of the services provided, but normally when we have contracts provided to us, we put out a request for proposals and we get three bids. And I have not seen any other proposals. And I'm just wondering what happened to that aspect, whether we can approve such a contract without having bids.
I'm gonna let Mr. Wilson explain his sole source information to you. But as we've asked other folks for these, we can't get apples to apples without actually going to someone else, a third party, and asking them for, to create a specification on this particular service and then bid that to different companies. So Mr. Wilson does have a sole source letter, and I think it is included in your package. I'll let him explain that to you.
What, what I read in the letter, Mr. Wilson, I'm not trying to pick at you. But you have developed a system to try and be one of the best tank maintenance programs in the industry, but you're not the only provider of these services. Is that correct?
That is true. That would be correct. There are others that do provide a similar service. I will tell you that very few provide the exact service. And there is a large portion of this program that is designed to asset management. There is a real engineering function that is a large portion of this program.
And I understand that you have engineered tank care, an ETC program. But that is a, that is a registered trademark that you can use for describing yourself. And it's not like a patent on something where nobody else has got that mechanism for doing it. So that's, when you are the sole source provider of this ETC, that's because that's your trademark and nobody else can use it. Is that correct?
Trademark, correct. The way we design our program, it is a designed program specific for this utility.
For doing this type of stuff. But again, others could have the, it may not be your program, but it would be a program that is designed to provide maintenance for water tanks. I'm just, we got a state statute that I'm trying to be sure we don't violate by going with what is not going to be technically a sole source of tank maintenance, but it is a sole source for ETC maintenance.
Is there other companies that could do the same thing, like, is there, are there other companies right here that can do what he, what Councilman Millens is trying to say? That could come in and, and do what you saying you do, that you're the sole source for?
There are.
In area.
Let me use another example. There are a lot of automobile manufacturers, a lot. But no one else can build a Ford, right? And no one can copy a Ford. And no one can patent another Ford. Likewise, our program is very, very specific to what we do. And our, if we have competition out there, they do not provide this exact program. And I'm not talking about the ETC in the name, the trademark. I'm talking about the way we do it, the, the design of the growth of the program, perpetual agreement style of win your contract. You don't find that.
Those are good selling points, but I'm just trying to make sure that we don't end up giving you a contract and somehow or another gets voided because we have not complied with the requirements. Again, I feel like, I feel like there are other people out there that can do similar to what you're doing. And so to cover us, you may need to get those bids. And it's happened before with other things, you know. I like, I like your tree service. I'll use a tree service for example, okay? We, different people that will cut trees, well, you may, you may cut a tree and that's it. And then the other guy says, you'll cut a tree, clean everything up and all this kind of stuff. So when it's brought to us, we'll say, we would rather have the guy that's will clean everything up than the guy that can just cut a tree. And so if, if the other contracts are brought to us and they're not apples to apples compared to what you're able to offer, then we can look at that. Which there's, I think, have to have multiple bids.
So what you're saying, Mayor, that at this point, we just need to go ahead and.
Again, the other people may not, may not be half of what you're doing.
So we can.
Well, not just, not only in service, but we are the only functioning group in Dogton County.
You even brought it up, so we got to follow that.
Yeah, you got parts, only you got.
Parts board in county, just finished two projects in Lamar.
Yeah, and of course, county provides water service to Lamar, doesn't it?
They sell water to Lamar, but they actually manage their own system, so. And there's no one else located in the Carolinas that does this. So, I mean, when you talk about geographic location, we are very specific to those geographic regions.
I just Googled, and there's one called American Tank Maintenance or something like that, ATM, out of Georgia. So their license to do business, I believe, in South Carolina as well. And like I say, I'm not being hard on you. I'm just trying to be sure that, and I don't see Kevin in here, but I'm just trying to be sure that if, if we do it, we do it in a way that protects the city as well as whomever we give a contract to. And I don't know, is Kevin seeing you ever was out? These documents, so you had a chance to look at the sole sources.
We do this, Charles, we'll put out a bid, we'll, we'll. To do that, we have to create a specification for that. In other words, we can't take Mr. Wilson's information and send that to everybody and say, can you do this? For, for this price or less, that, that's, is wrong in every kind of way. So we have to create a specification for tank maintenance.
Painting, maintenance, washing, and all the stuff that we need to have done, you should be able to create, we can do a proposal, we'll, we'll do that.
Yeah, I mean, let's make a general, I mean, the tank care service, let's make a general then.
I'd be happy to vote.
What you get back here.
I'd be happy to vote for you in November if we did it. But I just, I got some concerns about that aspect.
We appreciate it, John.
And we'll bring back as many quotes.
You may be the only one who bids on that, I don't know.
And if they're not prepared, and apples to apples, what we need, they don't know what you've given, but if we see it and it's not the same thing, then that's in our favor as well, so.
Yeah, I expect that, sure.
We'll take care of it. We'll do that.
Oh, yes, sir. Thank you all.
All right.
All right, last, I need council's approval for the purchase of ground penetrating radar unit. This purchase will be spread across three departments, water, sewer, and stormwater. This device locates and allows us to identify and precisely document the location of underground utilities, our underground utilities. And we can also use it to locate other companies, you know, phone lines, gas lines, whatever we need it for. We're currently in the process of building the GIS map, and this thing would make that so much easier. Our current process is dig till you find it. And this will give us depth, location, and everything, like approximately the size of the pipe.
Is that what it works?
Sure.
What it works?
It says tracer.
Tracer I got here.
Yeah, tracer.
It's which one?
Tracer. Tracer Electronics.
Okay. I thought you were, yeah.
Well, this will give you a chance to go and map the water lines before they break.
Absolutely.
We'll know where, where we are.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. And sewer and stormwater lines are impossible to locate. There, there's no way to locate the concrete pipes, can't be in the ground, this thing.
Physically, it looks like a push lumbor, and it has a computer screen on it. And the computer screen creates images similar to ultrasonic when you see the picture of the baby and, and mom, that kind of thing. It creates that kind of picture. So these guys are gonna have to become experts in using it also. There's gonna be a certain amount of training that goes along with it. And, and then the software itself, as we use it, will change and will need to maintenance the software as well.
So what cost of those?
I will know annually, but this, this seems to be considered the same thing as the history, which is like seven hundred and fifty dollars a year, kind of thing, a transfer.
So, yeah, I know you, you absolutely needed it. I don't know what I, whether it was a complaint or asking how in the world you are able to identify the lines as it is now. That has been one of the things that I've been quite concerned about is, do you not know what's going on? And how did that go along with the maps that you have now? I mean, it's like, if you don't get this, I just wonder, it, it just got the breakdown before you know what, what it's connected to and.
Yes, ma'am.
What it serves and all that kind of good stuff.
Our current map gives us a reference as to where the lines are. And like I said, it's, it's pretty much digging till you find it, or wherever the water's coming up, or wherever the sewer's coming up, that's where, that's.
And these little cameras that we've been using, there's no be particular.
Cameras on the water lines. And sewer lines, stormwater, yes, ma'am, but it, you can't.
They're caved in.
If they are caved in, that's correct. Yes. Yeah, once they cave in, it's too late for a camera. But this will, this will help us locate and map the entire system. So when we have trouble in a certain area, we'll know what's there before we start.
Please, Scott.
Yes, ma'am.
All right. You got my.
Just two general questions.
Yes, sir. I'm not trying to make light of it, I just.
Good, you did hide them like the.
No, it's gonna have to be absorbed into those three budgets.
And the tracer quote just says validated until September twenty-three, twenty twenty-three at two PM. I didn't know whether that was an issue.
We, we spoke to them, they'll hold on to the same price.
It's coming from the water department and where sewer and strip, so, and stormwater.
Oh, you were discussing as to where, what it comes out of.
Yeah, he was saying, what three departments, departments are gonna pay for it.
Oh, okay.
I motion to approve tracer electronics, fifteen thousand three hundred and forty-five dollars, the endpoint R GBR card, which costs that.
What did you say?
Ms. Reed.
You said fifteen.
Yeah.
So what's this eighteen?
It's eighteen, one ninety-four cents.
Yeah, it's eighteen I'm looking at.
I'm looking at fifteen.
Go to page three, three. There's taxes and shipping.
They want taxes too? I'd like to. Eighteen thousand one hundred and ninety-four dollars and seventy-six cents.
That's all second.
I'll second.
Two second. Mr. Miller, Ms. Reed, one more. The sixes.
I, motion to carry.
I got the sixes.
That's it, I get it.
We got one more. I don't know if you could, this Ferguson Water Works, it's the annual census, S A.
Oh, yes. That's maintenance on our software. We paid for this last year, got paid for it here before, got paid for it every year since you all have had census.
Oh, okay. The nine thousand one.
The city has paid for it ever since the city has had census, is the way I should have.
Well, I make a motion that we approve the, the nine thousand four hundred and eight dollars for the annual software maintenance fee.
I'll second.
Mr. Mills, Mr. Miller, Mr. Sager, I, and Mrs. Carrier.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Our streets and sanitation service group.
Yes, sir. If you will look in your package, you'll see an invoice from PD Fleet. This work's already been done. The bill, and this was fixing a garbage truck. Kendrick told me that the turbo went out on it. This is, the repair's already been done, but the bill is eight thousand two hundred and fifty-six dollars and forty-two cents. It's above my sign, and it's already, I'm just asking for your approval to, to pay them for the work they've already done.
Mr. Sager, truck, trash truck.
I'll make a motion that we approve the expenditure of eight thousand two hundred and fifty-six dollars and forty-two cents for the work that has already been performed on our trash truck.
I'll second.
Mr. Mills, Ms. Reed, Mr. Sager.
I, Mrs. Carrier.
A proclamation for domestic violence awareness, awareness month.
And Mayor, why are you coming? I want to thank you and thank, thank everybody for everything that they've done for us, for our contribution. for everything that they've done for us, working for us. Um, I've been working here, I've been working here for the last, uh, five years. And now I'm finally a resident of Darlington City.
All right, that was.
Um, I will be attending a lot of meetings, but I just, you know, I'm just so excited.
Okay.
Being here, with you, my miss.
And I'll, I'll read it for you, Mr. Mayor. Whereas domestic violence is a serious social problem that affects people of all races, ages, genders, and income levels. And whereas domestic violence is a widespread and affects over four million Americans each year. And whereas one in three Americans have witnessed an incident of domestic violence. And whereas children who grow up in violent homes are believed to be abused and neglected at a higher rate than the national average. And whereas domestic violence costs the nation billions of dollars annually in medical expenses, law enforcement, and court costs, foster care, sick leave, absenteeism, and non-productivity. And whereas only a coordinated community effort will put a stop to this crime. And whereas Domestic Violence Awareness Month provides an excellent opportunity for citizens to learn more about preventing domestic violence and to show support for the organizations and individuals who provide critical advocacy, services, and assistance to victims. Now, therefore, I, James C. Boyd, on behalf of the Darlington City Council and the City of Darlington, do hereby proclaim the month of October, Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Be it further proclaimed that the Darlington City Council encourages its citizens to work together to eliminate domestic violence in our community.
So I am the trauma counselor, trauma counselor slash advocate. Um, I have a office here in Darlington City. It's on one oh five Orange Street. Um, I see individuals of, well, this is Domestic Violence Awareness Month, but, um, I'm not just limited to domestic violence, um, persons, but also persons that have been sexually assaulted. And I say persons because it's not limited to just women. It, it also affects males as well.
We appreciate your help and appreciate you standing up for them. So if anybody has any issues, they can come to your office on.
They can, mm-hmm, they can. And there are some flyers out front as well with my number. Um, if you want a, a card with my name and my personal contact, you are more than welcome to get that as well.
What were the addresses?
It's one oh five Orange.
One oh five.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Appreciate it. Before we go into executive session, in case some of you aren't here when we come back, a couple reminders I'm gonna put out. That Tuesday, November the fourteenth, uh, is a regular meeting of Darlington City Council, six o'clock. October the twenty-sixth, uh, is Scare on the Square from four thirty P M. to six P M. Be downtown, the kids come out. There's a really good turnout for that with children. And the businesses all come together and give candy to them. Christmas Parade is December the second at, uh, four o'clock. It's on a Saturday, I believe, is that correct? It has started, it started the same route from the Fitch Boulevard Gems, uh, through town, down Castro Street. This Saturday, the Elks Parade will be, uh, on this Saturday the seventh. It starts at eleven o'clock, is that correct?
Eleven.
Eleven o'clock, and it starts at Joe's Grill, that area, comes down through the square.
Ross Street, gosh.
Coming through there, uh, in terms of, I think, is that correct?
Yes.
And then, uh, the following Saturday, uh, the fourteenth of October is our annual sweep to the festival put on by the Pilot Club. Appreciate those ladies' help, having a good turnout, things are already full, vendors and everything, so it should be a really good turnout. And they're gonna have a car show and all this time, too. Had a car show last few years, so should have a really good turnout this year for that. Um, November the seventh, make sure everybody knows to go out and vote. October the twenty-third through, November the, October twenty-third through November the third, you can do early voting, add the voter registration. Uh, November the seventh, you go and vote at your precinct. So make sure that you go out and make your voice be heard. We appreciate it. All right, do I have a motion for executive session to pursue it to South Carolina Code of Laws, section thirty dash four dash seventy-two, discussion of negotiations on incentive to propose contract agreements?
Mr. Mayor, um, we've had some questions about Halloween, and are we doing anything with it? So I think we just need to let it be known that we're not changing anything for Halloween this year. You know, it's all of a sudden, everything, and everyone's asked us to reconsider the date, like we've done once before in the past, so we just want to move forward.
Halloween is actually, uh, the thirty-first or something, Tuesday, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
And then we have a scare on the square the twenty-sixth, that Thursday before that. Uh, so on that Tuesday is, um, normal time, just whatever.
Yes, sir.
Usually a curfew.
I just want to make it kind of a public thing, so people have asked about it. So there's no reason to change or try for us to intervene and change anything. So there we said we were, we're not intervening for that.
Right, good. All right, we have a motion to go into executive session.
I'd like to make that motion.
I will second it.
Mr. Miller, Mr. Reed, please. We're good, Mr. Scarry, we're making a vote, we're gonna vote out. Thank you.